I'll call this meeting the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Uh, roll call please, Mr. Jameson.
Paul?
Here.
David? Little?
Here.
Jelka? Schwartz?
Here. Please transfer a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. And please trans for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we entertain a motion. The agenda received as proposed or as amended?
It's moved.
Second?
Moved in second. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the judge has approved. Next, we'll move on to public comments if there's anybody in the room or online.
Aaron Stacy Lappert, 411 on the street Waterloo, Iowa. And I'm here again based on the corruption uh that has been around us for quite some time. It goes back uh and the reason I'm here and I come on case nine nine one four six one two which happened in Urbandale, Iowa. Sexual assault on my daughter when a person went in the bathroom and stuck his finger in her vagina sent a message to me about life insurance that was on my father. So that's the risk that it has here. After that case happened, I can show now, which was not seen back then, that there were former employees that worked for Black Hawk County that played, I want to say, a part in brainwashing my daughter. After that, here in Waterloo with their children. So there was a retired person who somehow got to putting people in my daughter's ear to scare her. And this is a fact. These are the facts that are coming out of this, something that should have been investigated years ago. Uh, this is still ongoing, so you'll keep seeing me coming and I'm very happy that Tony Thompson is out of the way because I feel that he was very much a part of the cover-up by failing to investigate. And failing to investigate deliberately because of the root that goes back there. And it's a big cover-up and it's very hard to get your children to tell when you have so many different people in their ear from my son's mothers to uncles, my brothers, family members. But as John Sarcone told me twenty years ago in Des Moines, there's ways around that. And what we have to do is make the perpetrators tell. My children are scared to tell about the people that did it to them now. Some of them were former employees of Black Hawk County. I hadn't told Tony that and I just cut ends with Tony because when I brought this in to tell him that the perp who did that to my daughter, I was finding out by doing my own investigation, his name was Charles Tedesco. He was a former police officer in Des Moines at the time that that happened to my daughter. During the same time, another police officer was my landlord. He was also a National Guardsman, my landlord, and a Des Moines police officer, Jody Van Belsen. He helped stage the setup, what happened to my daughter. So law enforcement is very much a part of this. Now, what I'm telling you all, like I told the Des Moines City Council, and one member acted properly. He had the police chief call me this year. He contacted Jody Van Belsen only for Jody to tell a bald-faced lie, which only opened it up more to his guilt. I'm asking you all, as far as your members and what your job is, whatever you took over to do, please have these, my concerns, investigated. And like I said, we have witnesses out here, like Mr. Sarcone said, they make them get up in there to tell. But they have my children, so uh under the rest, I haven't talked to my daughter in about fourteen years now. And the last thing she told me was a person would be crazy not to find out why, what happened to me, to get to the bottom of it. And like I had to tell her because I think she was referring to her mother's fear. Her mother was just scared. She worked for the state of Iowa on the Department of Corrections at Mitchellville Prison. So not just has Black Hawk County failed us, the cities of Urbandale, Des Moines, Waterloo, Polk County, as well as the state of Iowa. But it starts right here. This is Black Hawk County. This is where this started at. This is where it grew that as well as Urbandale. You need to get on to Urbandale and Des Moines. The police chief in Des Moines was contacted by one of the city council members. He contacted Jody and he contacted me. They're doing their job. And it needs to be more done. The corruption is still ongoing. When I gave Tony Thompson this, I said it with Charles Tedesco after communicating with him. The next time I talked to him, he acted as if I never even came to his office and showed him this composite drawing of the person that did that to my daughter. It was reported at Black Children's Hospital. I'm not asking you to open the investigation on the assault. I'm asking you to investigate the non-investigation, the cover-up, which is taking place right here in our county. I know I've taken up three minutes and I appreciate your time. Uh, there's God's side and the other side. We're celebrating Christmas and we just come out of that. These people are on the other side and God is going to punish, punish them and the ones they love in 2025. I pray in Jesus' name, amen, amen. Let me get done.
Any, any other uh public comments, either in the room or online?
All right, hearing that, we will move on to the presentation uh from Clifton Larson of the Fiscal Year 2024 Audit uh with Doug Host.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Uh, it sounds good and I, Michelle, I don't think I can share my screen. So I know in your email you said you could advance the slides or or share the screen. Is it up there?
Not yet.
All right. Ah, that looks familiar.
All right, I'm glad you can see it.
All right, awesome. Well, let's get this party started. I mean, this audit exit presentation started. Um, I will give a brief introduction. I'm Doug Host. I'm a principal with Clifton Larson Allen and I've been auditing counties for thirty-three years. And for the last few years, Miranda Wenlet from CLA has been the, the principal on your audit to in presenting the audit results. But I actually was the principal from CLA on it uh before Miranda was advanced to principal. But she's now taken on uh a different role in our outsourcing group and won't be doing any audits anymore. Um, but I am thrilled to be back working with everyone at Black Hawk County and I'm even more thrilled to present what I think are some pretty positive results um from our fiscal year twenty-four audit. So on the next page is just a table of contents of the things I'm going to touch on today. The government commun- governance communications are required by audit standards. I'll hit some highlights or the key points that uh kind of happened to the county in twenty-four. Um, we'll have a very short discussion about the findings and recommendations and that's gonna actually include some, some pretty good news, I think. Um, we'll touch on uh our auditing of your federal grants and state compliance and wrap it up and have time for questions if any. So with that, we'll flip to the next page, which is just a divider page, Governance Communications. So audit standards require us to do certain communication with governance, the board supervisors. And we do that in a couple of different ways. One is we issue, uh it's about a five-page letter to um to the supervisors. And um, but on the slides here, it's uh we'll, I'll just touch on a few things. So the first box there, when we do an audit, what's our primary responsibility? It's to issue an opinion on your financial statements as to whether or not they are materially correct as presented. And all our opinions have names. The, the na- uh, what we issued for your fiscal year twenty-four audit is what's called an unmodified opinion, also known as a clean opinion. And basically, that just means your financial statements are materially correct as presented. Um, as far as the scope and timing of the audit, the actual fieldwork's been done for about a month and the actual audit was issued about two weeks ago. Um, so with that, next page. One thing just to point out, when we issue our opinion, it's on your entire financial statements as presented. So if you're ever going to use bits and pieces of those financial statements, uh, please reach out to me and let me know. There's just a few Ts that I got across and Is to Dot as far as that goes. In your financial statements, also sometimes referred to as the Act for or Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, um, there, there's notes in the financials and they explain more in more detail the or support for the amounts that are on the financial statements. Those are outlined in Note One. At the end of the audit, there is a letter that management uh signs and provides to us and basically, hey, we gave you the uh original documentation to audit or it was copies of the originals. Just uh need to point that out. Um, the next section, um, when we do audits, the audit standards will require us to communicate to the board or supervisors if there's any delays in performing the audit or difficulties in performing the audit or disagreements with management. And I'm happy to report there were none of those for this year. Um, I'm also happy to report that we didn't have any material audit adjustments for the fiscal year twenty-four audit. There were two very small uh adjustments that actually didn't uh weren't posted or updated just because they were so small. So um we're required to communicate those to you. So that's the governance communication. Um, any questions on that? Otherwise, we'll switch gears to the financial results.
David, I just have a question. When you mentioned before we could distribute or give the information from the audit to anyone, you wanted us to chat with you first?
If you're using bits and pieces because our audit opinion covers the entire booklet, but if the county or any other auditee just takes out bits and pieces, there's certain uh documentation I have to make note of and and uh pass it on to some other uh areas within CLA. And that's, that's basically all re- it's not just a CLA requirement, it's an audit standard requirement.
Sorry, can you give us an example of that? I'm not fully understanding.
Um, yeah, let's see. If you wanted to, you're unfamiliar with the financial statement structure and that there's about thirty-five pages of note disclosures in there. Well, if you ever wanted to just take those thirty-five pages and pass them on to a bond company or bonding company, agency, but not with the financial statements, but include our opinion, that can be misleading to the public. So that's why it needs to be a complete document i- if you're going to share. You can put, you're gonna put it on your website and that uh it's in its entirety. So you know, you don't have to let CLA know uh about that because it's in its entirety. The only time would be if you were to pick out uh pieces of the Act for and distribute it someplace. I gotta be honest, I've been doing this thirty-three years and I haven't ever really run into it.
I'm, I'm assuming in particular, you're referencing opinion, not necessarily figures and 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 alike. That, that, that we presumably are able to share, numbers and figures.
I think not if we were going to give like a total page. If we're taking pages out of the audit, we might need to.
Okay, but if we're just?
Yes.
If we're referencing numbers when we're having?
Yes.
Presentations or whatever.
That's okay.
Okay.
Yep. All right.
Thank you.
So speaking of the financial statements, we'll go to some highlights here. And on page eight, um, this is just in graphic form, uh, the contents of your annual comprehensive financial report. And on page nine, we'll just take a look at the financial highlights for each of the major funds. So on this slide here, we have the general fund, the county's primary operating fund. And for the year, its fund balance um was up about one point three million dollars. Uh, the biggest factor that, that we noted during the audit is that the expenditures were up about one point four million from the prior year due to a uh one million dollar contribution to UNI. Um, otherwise, the operations in the general fund were pretty consistent with the prior year. In the Rural Services Fund, the fund balance was up about three hundred seventy-four thousand. Um, one item to note here is we did see a decrease in the revenues and that was related primarily to a reduction in the local option sales tax revenues in that fund. The secondary roads fund balance was up about one point six million during the year. Um, based on our testing, we, we found that there were just fewer projects done in twenty-four in the secondary roads fund. On the next page is a couple more major funds, the debt service fund in particular. Um, as part of the audit, we verified that the debt principal and interest payments that were due in fiscal twenty-four were made. And ultimately, uh, after revenues coming in and debt payments going out, there was a increase in fund balance of two point nine million. Um, I believe the four point nine million and other sources and uses was the issuance of bonds um in fiscal year twenty-four. Those were the proceeds. Capital Project Fund, um, we saw an increase in expenditures. Um, well, well, actually, the net change in fund balance was six hundred sixty-six thousand. But the, the biggest item we noted was that uh expenditures were up in this fund for the Lynn County portion of the Destination Iowa Grant. Um, and the last major governmental fund that the county has is the American Rescue Program. Um, it also, um, let me think that. There were, is no change in fund balance and that's just due to the nature of this fund. Um, when, when you spend the mu- those dollars in this fund, um, that's when the revenues are recognized. So as of the end of the year, there's still about twelve mil- or as of June thirty twenty-four, there's still about twelve million dollars left in the American Rescue Program. Um, and then there's a column for non-major. As you all know, the county has a number of smaller special revenue funds and those all get globbed together for financial reporting purposes. And for the year, uh, its fund balance was up about two point two million. And uh we'll show the, the next slide has a breakout of, of that. Now, overall, the county's fund bal- governmental funds' fund balance was up about seven point seven million, which is an increase of eleven percent over the prior year. And um yeah, all in all, that it's uh the county's financial position improved. And we have a slide in a little bit that, that looks a little bit more at the, the fund balance and the reserves that the county has. So on the next page, I mentioned there's just the breakout of the smaller special revenue funds, the, the largest one being local option sales tax. And um, the, the local option sales tax had the large, saw the largest increase in fiscal year twenty-four of about one point six million. All the others were relatively consistent, excuse me, with the prior year. And if we can advance to the next slide. Um, the county also has two enterprise funds, rural sewer, rural sewer and rural water. And for the year, the, the net position um decreased about a hundred and four thousand. Um, last year is about the same as far as the decrease of about a hundred and four thousand. And uh certainly compared to like the county's general fund, the operations uh for this are much um, much less uh massive, let's say. All right, the next slide. In your annual comprehensive financial report, there's two sets. Actually, there's just, I'm gonna slide ahead. Here, we're reporting the county's capital assets. So the county has about six point seven million of land. At the end of the fiscal year, there are six point three million in construction in progress. And the largest capital asset category continues to be infrastructure, roads and bridges. And then there's, it just shows the breakout for the capital assets for the business-type activity. So the capital assets tends to typically be one of the larger uh balances on the financial statements that we audit and we spend more time there then. On page fourteen, uh, the county has some debt at the end of the year. And as I mentioned earlier, we verified that all the debt payments that were due were made. Uh, there is an increase of about nine hundred thousand in total liabilities. I also mentioned that the county issued four point six million of uh bonds in fiscal twenty-four and that was for solid waste uh purposes. And it'll be repaid with solid waste commission, by the solid waste commission. And also was part of the audit, there was a three point seven million dollars in principal payments made in fiscal year twenty-four. So you net that all together and the total liabilities went up about nine hundred thousand for the year. All right, here's the slide where two sets of financial statements, the modified or traditional financial statements that in the use of the term fund balance. And then there's some gover- uh full accrual financial statements and that's the bottom line that has a net position. So there's typically six major things that we're just required to say, here's why you have two sets of financial statements and these six items explain why they're different. On the fund level, they don't report any ca- you don't report any capital assets or debt, but on the government-wide, you're required to. So there's just a little reconciliation from the modified accrual statements to the government-wide statements. On the next slide, excuse me, uh, the fund balance levels for governmental entities is, is always a very important um factor. It sort of talks about or or identifies, you know, how much reserves the county has. So we take a little comparison of each of the major funds here to see uh how much fund balance does each fund have as a percentage of expenditures. The general fund at the end of the year at a hundred and eight percent, rural services hundred and forty-five, secondary roads eighty-eight, debt service two hundred and fifty-one percent, capital projects eighty-eight, and ARPA zero, but that's as expected. Um, and probably one of the most frequent questions I get is how much should our fund balance reserves or fund balance levels be? And the answer to that is it depends. Now, the Government Finance Officers Association recommends like no less than three to five months. There's many other national organizations and that say no less than five months. So based on your fiscal year twenty-four financial statements, i- in these calculations, there's three items I, I'd know. First one is fund balance levels are above the recommended minimum levels, which is a good thing. I'd say your fund balance levels are strong. And thirdly, uh, definitely stable. Uh, if you go back a few years, the, the reserves in each of these major funds have remained very stable. So that's important for the county, excuse me. Um, typically, when you go to issue uh debt, the rating agencies will look at your fund balance levels and are they sufficient? Are they uh steady and stable? And I, I would say definitely Black Hawk County's fund balance levels are, are in good shape. On the next slide, um, it's the general fund specifically. Um, the fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, you're, as I mentioned, your general fund is your primary operating fund. And for the year, there is about a three point three eight percent increase in that ratio or calculation. And um, yeah, that's definitely over, you know, fifty percent of expenditures. Um, it's above that. So healthy fund balance in the general fund specifically. Next slide, excuse me, um. When we do our audit, we test the county's controls and compliance with accounting standards. And then we're required to report on the results of that testing. And um, it's not going to take very long to go over these because there actually aren't any that we're required to communicate. So that's awesome. I mentioned, I've been doing this for about thirty-three years now, auditing counties. And I can't be one hundred percent accurate, but I'm pretty doggone close to a hundred percent that uh over all the audits that I've worked on for thirty-three years. Um, I believe this is the twenty-fifth one that I've issued or signed where there weren't any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies or compliance items to report. So I'd say Black Hawk County gets a big thumbs up for that because uh we do a lot of testing and typically that results in some, some recommendation or finding. But for June thirty twenty-four, we have none to report for Black Hawk County. So again, big thumbs up to everyone there. Um, part of that process, um, we bug a lot of people when we do the audit, for sure. And I do want to take just a quick moment here to thank Michelle, everybody at the county that we bug and ask for a bazillion documents and um pick up your conference room while we're there working, et cetera. But I, I just, you know, the staff there are great to work with. They're, they're very responsive. We appreciate that every time they see us, there's a big smile. Yeah, I think most of the time there's big smiles. But I, again, uh, I think it's important for the board to know that um the staff, uh, they made a, uh, may, how do I put this? Staff allowed us to be able to do our audit uh as needed and they're very responsive and uh understanding of our requests. So thank you there. Um, as far as more details, page nineteen on the findings and recommendations. That just uh again shows no material weaknesses. Page twenty-one. Mentioned we had to test the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. We tested the controls, we tested the compliance and there's no items that were required to report. Let me step back one slide. Last year, there was one item that uh was reported, a material weakness for a prior period adjustment. Whenever that happens, the next year's audit, we're required to go and follow up and test that. And because we didn't have any material audit adjustments or prior period misstatements, that item from last year is considered resolved. And um just know that we, we did follow up and well, we're, we're required to follow up to see if it's been resolved. And it has, and that's why we don't have any findings to report this year. All right, page twenty-two, and the audit, audit standards board has a bunch of things we're required to do and the state requires us to do a bunch of additional testing as well as far as your compliance with various uh items in the state code. This slide, there's a ten, eleven, twelve different categories that we are re- we're required to do testing on. And uh there are no items that we're required to report there. So I would say that's a pretty clean bill of health for the county on the state compliance items. And with that, a lot of information in a short period of time. But again, I just want to thank everyone at the county for uh helping us uh do our audit procedures that are required. We, we know it's not that fun maybe sometimes, but uh it, it was a pleasure working with everyone there. With that, I got time for questions, if any.
Maybe just a really quick clarification. Page nine, you had referenced, um, I know you mentioned the, the UNI funding. So revenues. So revenues were forty-five million, expenditures came in at just about forty-four, does that sound? And that, that's in the general fund, so that does include the million for you and I, is accounted in that area, correct?
Yeah, I believe the forty-two million, four seventy-nine thousand, yes, that does include that payment to you and I.
Perfect, thank you. So we did, we did still one point two.
But a lot of that is restricted fund balance, I would like to point out. I believe I should took a minute to check this. I think our unaside, which is the one that's really available to us, was up five or six hundred thousand.
Got it. Thank you.
Hey, well, thank you, Doug, thank you, Michelle, and my staff. It's great that we have a really squeaky clean operation here in Black Hawk County. So it's happy to report that to the public.
And to be able to do it with a smile on your face every time is impressive.
You know, well, sometimes there aren't smiles, but for the most part, there are.
Easier for you than for everyone else. I, I would like to take a minute just to thank Clifton Larson Allen and their team. They are very good at how to ask us questions and requesting things. And I think our whole audit team, especially Billy Heath is with us today, who does, she's responsible for a large part of the audit. And we, we really appreciate your team and how we work together. It, it's a good, good relationship, and it makes it easier on all of us. Because yes, some of the list of questions can get overwhelming, so it, it was, we had a good, good session this year.
Thank you, Billy.
Well, thank you, Michelle.
Doug, I guess one question. Well, we're receiving the hard copy of the audit soon.
I believe they have been sent out already, yes. But I will check as soon as I hang up here. So definitely, we'll get them out to you if they have them. But it was my, I've been on vacation for a little bit, so I, my memory is a little foggy from when we issued a couple of weeks ago. But I will check on it and let Michelle know as soon as I have the details there. But I think they may have gone out.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right, well, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Have a great twenty twenty-five.
All right, well, now we move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the board is required to approve expenditures, that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue payments against the various settlements of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, Michelle?
Good morning, board. Our total bill payment today is one million, five hundred twelve thousand dollars, three hundred and four, three dollars and eighty-three cents. The sixty forty fund is three thousand, ninety dollars and sixty-five cents. And some larger items that are included in that. The sheriff's office is paying eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars roughly to sector technology for cradle point equipment. I believe that is to allow access in their vehicles to access the system. And we also are making the payment to Gilbertville today for the emergency service building, and about two hundred thousand dollars. And funny that Doug mentioned Lynn County. We did finally receive our reimbursement from the state for the Lynn County portion. So we are paying them today nine hundred sixteen thousand dollars for that grant. And I think those are the only significant things today. Everything appears to be in order.
Board, any questions?
I guess the only question on the Gilbert bill. They were going to return the assigned statement, I think, from the mayor?
Correct.
Did they do that?
Yes, we did receive a signed statement as an alternative to some of the information we were requesting, so.
All right, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Jameson.
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Item five, received project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, board. Kathy Nicholas. After a roads update, the paved roads are in good condition. They're wet this morning, but we do anticipate them drying off due to the wind, which will put them in good shape for this evening. The grader operators are out, the motorators are out on the gravel road system today. There have been some hot holes developing just due to the rain. We do expect some lowering temperatures over the next few days, so it will be good to get those smoothed out before the roads freeze again, the grapples freeze again. In the office, we are inspecting the work that PCI is doing out on Brandon Road. That's that small ditch improvement project that I've told you about. They are working steadily out there over the last few days, where they're about halfway done, making good progress for considering it's December. They're hoping to continue on with the other half in the next few weeks. Can I answer any questions for you? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads or elected officials wish to provide an update this morning? Hearing none, we will move on to the minutes approved from the December seventeen, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all as a favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, same sign, minutes are approved. Next, we'll move on to the set agenda that's approved with a single resolution.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Jameson.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Move on to item eight, contracts and agreements. This is a resolution that the agreement received from Rarestep Incorporated, doing business as a fleet TO from Birmingham, Alabama, for fleet inventory management software with a bid of fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars. We approve, and for the chair to sign as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second. Moving seconded, Kathy?
Yeah, just a few comments about this. We did budget twenty-five thousand dollars for this in our FY twenty-five budget. The software will allow us to keep track of our vehicles, their mileage, their maintenance schedules, help us with replacement methods. We're anticipating it to be very helpful. We did spend quite a bit of time researching for softwares. We had extensive interviews and demos with them. And we did settle on the fleet EO system. It is used by several counties in Iowa. Not the cheapest or not the least expensive, but it was only two hundred dollars more than the least expensive. So we are asking to be allowed to spend the fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars on the software. It does have an annually recurring cost of thirteen thousand, five hundred, which was the least expensive of the four we checked out. We do think this would be a good product. My train has reviewed the contract and given us the good lights. We would, I would ask that we be allowed to sign the contract with them and move ahead with this product.
And you're experimenting around with the program. Would you, have you seen that maybe it would be beneficial across the county?
Certainly for other county vehicles, absolutely. That, they couldn't be, they could be incorporated over time as, if in the future, if that's what we decide to do.
Okay, is that annual renewal, that thirteen five, is that based off of the number of vehicles?
I believe this software was, we are paying based on the, the assets.
So if we were to, for instance, expand the scope to cover all county vehicles, for instance, potentially that would increase, that's not a flat fee?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, we can, we can provide more.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion or questions? This is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Jameson.
Little?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. I'll move on to section nine, other business. Item eight, this is a resolution with the lowest reasonable bid received from Taves Constructing Service LLC for the twenty twenty-four Washburn Sewer Lagoon Fence Project with a bid of ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred, ninety-two dollars and five cents. The awarded and authorized chair to sign the contract is recommended by ACOM Technical Services Incorporated and Michelle Weener, finance director.
I'll move.
I'll do second for a discussion, because I thought this project, I was just looking at late last night. I know there's a lot of different information about this than typical project. But we have it on today's agenda because it's needed for this December thirty-first.
Correct, this will be our last ARPA project today that we're trying to get signed another way. This, this replaces probably at least seventy-five percent of the fencing around the lagoon. There is another alternate to do another piece that we are not accepting at this time. Talk about that in the future, but I'm exploring that with attorneys right now. So we did receive several bids. We were happy to see that we did get like three. And this, this was the lowest by approximately twelve hundred dollars or so. So the two were very close. So that, that typically tells us we're, we're in the right ballpark with what we're doing, so.
I'm kind of curious, because we, like you say, this doesn't require us to do the hearing because it's less than a hundred dollars.
Correct.
But all three bids came in over a hundred thousand.
The base bids were all below, which is why we bid the way we did. We, we did a base bid, and then we added several alternates. So we could, you could choose to not accept the second alternate. That would keep it well under a hundred thousand. We, what we did was try to get the most that we could for a hundred thousand dollars of this. We actually did negotiate with the spender to bring the pricing on his alternate number two down so that the total we're paying today would be under a hundred thousand dollars. And again, he was already the low bid where he was being.
Typically, we don't do that as a county, we ask others to do that.
No, typically, we do not. And I did, my train did, I, I did ask, reach out to him and ask if that's even appropriate. He did not have an issue with it because, I mean, it did reduce the cost, so it's in our benefit. We'll be paying less than we would have otherwise. I don't know, Chris Olkers from ACOM is here, I'll give any comments.
I think you got it all covered.
Yeah, I think if, yeah, no issue, like I said, with what you're talking about. I think just issue for the county and the position we'd be taking. And I, I know it's, I know everybody's working hard to try to take much advantage of the dollars that were there and that we allocated. But when I looked at the engineer's estimate and how high it was, and that we did expect it to be so much more, I knew we didn't have the timing for the hearing.
Right.
To work it in before December thirty-first. But to me, then, the option should have been, we take what's available under the, under the requirement.
And you're welcome to choose that. We could, you could do just the base, you could do the base and only alternate one.
And then alternate one.
And then we, we would not probably be doing piece along.
It'd be the west, the west side. We'd be doing the, the north, the east, and the south side.
And to be completed at a later date with alternate three, right? So it would be just if we were to do that, because I.
But if you eliminate another, we would, there'd be a piece along one road that we would not be able to do. That's alternate.
Do the alternate two, yeah.
If you don't, the way to do that.
That's what I meant, it'd be delaying both, but I just, because the fence won't be completed anyway, the complete fence.
No, but the fence, the fence part that is, that we're not recommending be done now is adjacent completely to farm fields. All the other fencing is adjacent to roads, so the access is easier for people who we don't want to be. I mean, we don't want anyone to get injured by going waiting in a lagoon. It's just not the, it's not what you want to have happen. So we're trying to make sure that that doesn't happen by putting fencing at least along all the sides that have access, direct access to roads.
Although we've had no real problems with the fencing issue.
No, we've had, there have been car accidents that have run into the fencing. And so some of the fencing is not in super shape, right? Because it has, and of course, those things happen, you don't get a record of that, so you have no way to pursue it. But yes, we have been very fortunate that there have not been any incidents. But I know even as you, you know, if you ever drive down Highway twenty and you see the fencing at Dyke around their lagoon, ours is nothing like that right now, so.
No, and it's not that I wouldn't like to do all three alternates. I mean, the base and then the all three, and the two, like I said, get the most bang for the buck. But because of the way it came in, that the, that the all three were over a hundred thousand.
Yes, this one was, this one was over by a hundred and forty-two dollars. Yeah.
I don't care, a hundred dollars or whatever, that there's still like being at a hundred thousand, or we should have had a hearing. So just for me, I would, that's just my position.
Well, the alternate, so, so then if we were to, if we're to not do as much fence with, as proposed, what would we be eating to?
At a later date?
At a later date.
Well, based on whatever it comes in, and if we bid it at the different price, but on this one, it was what, twenty-one thousand?
So, so for about two hundred and fifty dollars. I hear, I, I hear you.
I know.
Based on, on principle, but for about two hundred and fifty dollars, we're talking about a twenty thousand dollar later expense, if we were to choose. Just for the record, it is Taves.
Taves.
Contracting.
I just don't like the practice. No, I understand, I come back and ask someone to change the bid. We could have, to me, then, ask everybody if they wanted the opportunity to change their bid.
It's, it is done in industry to negotiate with your low bidder. You don't, you can't go back and negotiate with all of them, but.
And the county maybe has before I go.
Well, I don't know either.
I don't know.
And we certainly don't have to.
I don't, no, I know what you're trying to do, yeah.
I mean, I definitely agree with the, the concept of getting the most out of these dollars. To leave any ARPA dollar on the table just seems, seems like poor practice.
Any other solutions, I guess? It's twenty thousand dollars we're leaving on the table, I don't like that either, that there's got to be. But today, that's the date of thirty-one, I just, yeah.
I mean, we, we can do more using replacement revenue. Because I, I was trying to follow the.
I appreciate.
I was trying to follow the county bidding policy, which is why we limit it to a hundred thousand, which is why we are not recommending to do all of that, because it does make much sense to do all of that. Because as time goes by, typically, we would assume that pricing will be higher at some unknown date in the future to do this. We've gone through the, we've really gone through the whole bid process. The only thing that hasn't been done is a hearing in this room. I mean, we have published it in the paper an adequate amount of time and in the plan rooms. And, and we know that because our low bidder in particular picked it up off the plan room. So we feel like there has been adequate public opportunity for the bidding. The, the county policy, which is actually a little bit lower than what the DOT limits are now. I think county engineer Nicholas spoke about that a week or two ago, that we act, you know, we froze it at a hundred thousand, where if we were adjusting that with what the DOT thresholds are, I think it would even be above a hundred thousand. I, I normally would never, I, I would probably normally never recommend we do this except that it was a hundred and forty-two dollars over that rather arbitrary limit of a hundred.
Coming under expense category for ARPA, right?
That is the plan right now, yes.
How much do we have left? How, how much are we going to send, or are we going to send any dollars back?
Well, we will, no, we will definitely not send dollars back. But what we're doing now, though, is we're switching money, and we didn't know that, correct? When we started doing this, because we didn't quite have everything finalized for the Pinecrest, the Pinecrest renovations, and also the HVAC projects. So we, we have a lot of projects that are coming to fruition. Right, where you're kind of at the end of allocating the expense category funds. So if you recall, when we looked at all those contracts, those are expense category eligible. The expense category eligible portion was about two, maybe two point two million more than we have in expense category funding. So that other two million has to be paid for out of the pot, if you will. And the contracts are actually a little more than that. I, I'm trying to remember if it was seven million or nine hundred thousand. But we did talk about, depending on what alternates were chosen, we would need to use reserves to completely finish all those projects. And that includes both with. and that includes both with all pots of money.
I guess I'm ready to move forward on this today, because I see like the purpose of the county bidding policy is to get the best deal for the county, really, and that's been done here through, um, the extra negotiations, and so. I also look at it as like a safety issue, and so it's not something I wanna delay, and I'd, I'd like to see the proposal on getting the other side done relatively soon, too.
I'm working with Mike, and he's out right now, but we, we're working on something about that.
I, I'd feel better if all three were given the opportunity to reduce their cost once it came in over a hundred thousand, and evidently, it wasn't spoken in the, or written in the.
No, we, we actually, we intentionally did not reduce that because we were concerned that we would get three bids for a hundred thousand. So we wanted them.
Would have been to our advantage.
Well.
Only in hindsight.
Although we have issues with selecting.
In hindsight, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, um, so we felt that this was a better way to get competitive bids, which, I mean, I believe it worked because we did get a variation in the bids from. And very excited and pleased that this person actually has an active SAM registration because at this, it, it just became active on Friday, the twenty-seventh, by the way, but that, it didn't matter, I had it, you know, when we opened the bids. As you know, we, we have had issues. It's taken quite a while to get some of those active for other contractors, so we were, we were pleased, we had at least two that had active registrations, so it, it did feel like we, it was competitive because they were able to meet all the requirements and.
Is it, they were the only ones?
No, the, the Connolly Construction also had it. I, well, Lovell said they did, and I just didn't go out and check theirs because their bid was higher. So I think all three of them actually had it. We did have other people, I had other people contacting me about, um, the bid documents, so maybe the others chose not to bid because they didn't have it, I, I'm not sure. But we were happy that there were three. You always, you always feel better when you have multiple bids, and, and when the two low were relatively close, you felt like you were, they're bidding properly, you know, there's not a mistake in the bid.
I would add that, um, Connolly received three bids and they chose the lowest one out of those three and then submitted them as a subcontractor. So really got five from fence contractors. It was three that didn't have the SAM numbers, but they still wanted to do the work, so they contacted Connolly, who's doing the lagoon project for us, um, and he selected the lowest one of those three and submitted.
What's the desire of the board today?
I'm ultimately still comfortable that, that the, the resolution is read. I also don't wanna see it die, so. I don't wanna see it just die if we, if we can't pass it.
Oh, well.
It dies now, anyway, if it does.
Well, it just dies. I mean, there's not a, there's not a tomorrow.
Oh, well, we can visit it. We can visit this project, though, and.
We can visit the project, we can't visit it at a hundred thousand dollars.
We can do, oh, you mean the project entirely and entirely?
I'm saying if we don't pass it, do we have, there's no real reconsideration?
Well, this, as it's written, um, we could also, I guess, take different actions to approve the base bid and an alternate one is an option. So there is to not let it die.
Okay, okay.
So there is that as an option. And quite honestly, that's the only one I'm gonna accept because I don't like the practice
Yeah, I guess.
that we're starting to set a new precedent for going back and asking people to reduce bids.
So is that your motion?
I, I guess in, in place of is, how would you like that, Tim, to, I mean, rather than, because we have to take.
Tavis actually had made the motion that you seconded, so. You could either withdraw both of those and make a new motion, or Tavis, I'll pick a motion and accept as a second.
So.
So I'll make a motion, do I have to make a motion to amend?
Um, I think you could amend your motion.
But then we approve the amend and then we.
Or you just withdraw it.
Okay, I'll withdraw the motion.
And make a new one.
I'll make the motion to.
Hold on that one and let it fail.
Or you, you could let that, correct.
I'll, I'll make the motion, well, now I, I already did the, the motion. Yeah, so I'll make the motion, uh, to approve the base, um, uh, for the bid from.
The, the base plus alternate one would, um, eighty-seven eight thousand, eight ninety-three.
Yeah.
That's what you're planning to do.
Yeah. The base plus alternate one.
So how much of the fencing is that leaving, you done?
The whole west side.
Then we, we, we could still.
Plus the other, I don't know which direction that is, the, I don't, I believe, it's the one you would.
If you're looking, this is, this is the highway, it's this, it's this whole side over here.
So two and three were.
But then what's two?
Two is just the south side.
Right, so it's the west and the south.
How that won't be captured?
No, 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 the east, the north, the east, and the south are being done, right?
No, there's, they're changing the motion. They're changing the motion, not doing, uh, let me.
I thought the base bid was the north and the, and the east, and then the second one is the south.
Right, I maybe, I don't understand, but let's, I don't know what's happening to that, but I'm going to pull up now. In a minute, anyway. I didn't get it on, let's help here, this. Whatever it is, alternate one would be approved in the base.
Bid zero six plan sheet.
Yeah, I don't know why it's not on their screen, because I can see it online.
So.
Next one.
I mean, I'm basing this on that was to use or how it was placed, the one, two, and three were certain ones.
So when I look at the plan sheet, alternate two.
The base is the north and the east, alternate two, alternate one is the south. It's the pink.
Yes, so alternate two, I think, is that blue.
Yeah.
Right here.
A light blue.
Mouse, the light blue.
On the left, yeah.
Adjacent to the farm field two.
Green is the south. Pink.
Now, apparently, that is one, so we are getting the, by the roads.
So what is, what is the dark blue bag?
That was the alternate three.
Okay.
Which is not, which we were not even recommending to do. We thought we would try to do option two, which is white blue color. But if we don't do that, all we're gonna do is black.
Don't make sense that the priorities of alternates would have been most, our priority or most critical. But you're seeing the south does.
Yes, in fact, I was mistaken on that, so thank you for correcting me, Chris.
Thank you, yeah, good to have you.
So this is, we've got the, the black and the pink is what's included in what we're doing with the base and alternate one.
Yes. Yes, I believe that's correct, you can see, that chart's hard to see, I can.
And what's the amount that?
It's seventy-eight thousand, eight ninety, eight hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Do we have to state for the base and the alternate one?
That was, that was Tavis' resolution, the base plus alternate one, for seventy-eight thousand, eight ninety-three, seventy-five.
All right, is there any further discussion or questions? None, uh, roll call please, Mr. Jameson.
Paul?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Move on to item B, this is a motion of personnel requisition for one temporary civil engineer tech aide, one, effective May first, twenty twenty-five. Be approved as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer. Second. Kathy?
Uh, customarily, we hire one summer in front to help us out in the office. Uh, we do budget this in both fiscal years, F O P, and ask that we be allowed to, uh, proceed with this requisition.
Good. Any discussion or questions?
Summer works, sounds good.
This is a motion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All is opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item C, this is a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five eminent domain commission list.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hear you none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Uh, thank you to everybody who's willing to serve on that commission.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Apologize, Chairman Schwartz, who made the motion on the personnel requisition? I don't know that we got one, I apologize if I missed it, but there was a vote, but I don't remember.
I think we did.
Yeah.
Oh, I did.
All right, thank you, just wanted to.
Sorry. Uh, we'll move on to item D, this is discussion, possible board action. Does policy revisions, the retirement policy be approved effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, as recommended by the Policy Review Committee?
So moved.
Second.
The Husmer HR Director, just a couple comments here, so we had a meeting, um, and, uh, this, we're in December with policy review. This is really just kind of tweaking a policy, actually, Michelle, um, had brought to my attention during the audit that, uh, for our retiree insurance, that it excludes elected officials. I think that's something that happened, mine are sitting and working with Grant Peter, um, in the auditor's office, that was a decision made back in the mid-two thousands, um, so we just are treating elected officials no different than an employee here, that you're allowed to continue your healthcare coverage into retirement. Um, of course, you pay for that, and elected official be like an employee who pays for that, but, uh, it seemed a little odd to exclude them, especially when we, we have a lot of now elected officials that started as employees, um, throughout the offices, pretty much all but the board office, and then eventually moved it to an elected official role. So, uh, that's why we're making this change, any questions? And then we do have a meeting next, uh, Tuesday, uh, still working on a few, um, policies. I mentioned my email about, uh, refreshments and I think even the local options and a few other things, so we'll be meeting next Tuesday after the board meeting, so.
I was, we will be looking for another supervisors to join us on policy review. It's a fun time.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, that's great, yeah.
Thank you, Chris, uh, we expanded the, uh, group, too, we have five members, we expanded it to seven to have, uh, to include other department heads. My role being primarily on the employee handbook, policies around employment, um, needs, but, uh, we definitely have, uh, departments that work more closely in purchasing, bidding, contracts, things like that, that would provide good insight, but yes, we're looking for volunteers from the board, a fellow vacancy there, and then, uh, a couple volunteers from department heads as well, so.
I think we were gonna have some more discussion, all of this, very kind of org meeting.
All right, is there any further discussion or questions? This is a resolution, roll call please, Mr. Jameson.
Layla?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Next, we'll move on to item ten, any reports or information from the board. Um, I believe that, um, Mr. Jameson has a statement for you on behalf of supervisor Little, who's having difficulty speaking today.
Uh, yes, I got this from Tom yesterday. Uh, first, I'd like to apologize for not delivering my last message as a county supervisor myself, but I had procedure done on my mouth yesterday. Now, some will say hallelujah. But I wanna thank this board and all other board members I've had the pleasure to serve with over the last twenty years. I can't emphasize, emphasize enough, as board members, our success is measured on the superior help and professionalism from our county employees. In closing, I want people to know that all my actions while serving as a county supervisor were in the best interest of Black Hawk County at all times. The end.
Well, Tom, I wanna thank you for your, uh, twenty years of service, uh, to the citizens of Black Hawk County and the board of supervisors. I've always, uh, appreciated your humor and your wit, um, and that will definitely be missed. We have this beautiful, uh, cherry clock that we wanna present to you uh, in recognition of your twenty years of service to the board of supervisors, and thank you for your commitment and your dedication to Black Hawk County.
Yeah, thank you very much, I do appreciate it from all of you.
Thank you, Tom.
I was just gonna add to Chris's, um, account, but earlier this month, I'd asked, um, our in-house historian and auditor, Grant Beeter, about other supervisors that had served twenty years of service in one continuous term without interruption. And there weren't many, but there were a couple, and I was gonna say, in addition to you with your twenty years, there was a gentleman by the name of C.B. Klein, who served from nineteen thirty-one to nineteen fifty for twenty years. But the one I, I obviously had no idea of, and I don't know if anyone in the room would, was the gentleman by Edward Refshaghi, and he served from nineteen twenty-four to nineteen sixty-two. He served, his term was thirty-eight years. I can't even imagine, I'd said to Graham, I'd love to talk to someone with that kind of history about what that had all been through, but thank you, um, I say, today we're recognizing you and as a token of our appreciation, I just wanna, I hope you enjoy the clock for many years to come, but we applaud you for your hard work and dedication to the county, and we'll get this clock to you one way or another, you haven't avoided us completely. Thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
All right, with that, um, I will entertain a motion for a German.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All is opposed, same sign.